I have mugs, but this is a travel mug. So it's charged and it stays hot at what temperature you set it for a long time.
Stop it.
Yeah. My son got me my first one as a Christmas present and I have them all over the place. And I give them out as gifts. It's the best thing ever. So 144 degrees. I like my coffee hot.
That's hot.
I was gonna start it.
Right.
She was just not. I'm just kidding.
You could, but I understand. Good afternoon. We are here and ready to start the public hearing for 1:30, which I'm a minute or two after that. I don't know what happened of all the words. Okay, I got it. I'd like to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting of August 6, 2024. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. We will proceed with public hearings starting with ordinances and item 52. We're starting, and so you'll know ahead of time I am pulling item P 63 when we get to that item. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I thought you were gonna start with P 58.
No. I didn't make that change, so.
Chair, you said 63?
He's pulling.
No, I'm pulling that item, but I'm starting with P 52. Isn't that the first item?
I was just informed by the agenda coordinator that we were moving 58 up front.
Well, I think the chairman would have been the one that would have moved it, but I didn't. I'm just thinking that way. I don't know. Okay. So, on better advice than I had myself, we will go to P 58. If that person will come forward, we'll get it taken care of. That's all right. I don't care.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Paula Raicala, the Support Services. Item P 58 is an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, creating a section to be numbered Chapter 94, Article 4, establishing a local provider participation fund, providing for the authorization of non-advalorem special assessments to be imposed, levied, collected, and enforced against real property owned or leased by private for-profit and not-for-profit hospitals to fund the non-federal share of supplemental payments benefiting hospitals, providing health care services to Medicaid, indigent, and uninsured members of the Pasco County community, providing for the procedure for adopting the annual non-advalorem special assessments to be deposited into the local provider participation fund, providing for the authorized uses for the local provider participation fund proceeds, providing for separability, providing for areas embraced, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
And we have proof of publication of hearing of this matter in the Tampa Bay Times, July 17, 2024.
Okay.
This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval. We do have a presentation for you, if it is the board's pleasure. All right?
All right.
We have Colleen Ernst from Adelanto Healthcare Ventures, who will be doing the presentation today.
Okay.
Might be good for the public to hear what we're doing, I think. Good thing.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Ernst, and I'm with Adelanto Healthcare Ventures. That is a company that offers technical expertise in the area of accessing reimbursement for care for the Medicaid population and for the indigent and uninsured. In a nutshell, our goal in working with the hospitals here in Pasco County and around the state of Florida is to ensure that every citizen has access to quality care regardless of income. And so we're here today to talk about an opportunity for Pasco County to partner with its hospitals and to work to ensure that the federal tax dollars our citizens are paying here in Pasco and across the state of Florida come back into the state of Florida to facilitate access to care for everyone. So historically, Florida's hospitals are limited in the reimbursement they receive when they're providing care to the Medicaid and indigent population. Typically, when a hospital performs a procedure for someone who qualifies for Medicaid, that's an individual who is low income and who has a qualifying disability or condition or is in a qualifying phase of life, hospitals in Florida were only able to get about 60 cents on the dollar in reimbursement for those services. So every time that a hospital was providing these services, they were losing 40 cents on the dollar in actual cost. So a $10,000 labor and delivery, and in Florida, one in two births is a Medicaid birth, but a $10,000 labor and delivery procedure would result in the hospital losing $4,000 out of pocket because they were not receiving reimbursement to cover the full cost. That problem, of course, is compounded by the fact that hospitals are only receiving very limited reimbursement for charity care. So for the individuals who walk in who are low income and do not have any form of insurance, hospitals were writing off these costs as charity care. That amount statewide resulted in about a $3 billion loss every year. So these were limitations on hospitals. These were difficulties. In November of 2020, Governor DeSantis included in his recommended budget direction for the state's Medicaid agency to seek federal approval for a program to help address this problem that was known as the directed payment program. And the function was to help access federal dollars that Florida had historically left on the table and to use those dollars to help narrow the reimbursement gap. The dollars follow the patient. Now, of course, the issue was, was how do you come up with state dollars to bring in the federal dollars? How do you come up with the state dollar that qualifies for federal match? And the answer to that was looking to local governments to collect from the hospitals only. So to levy a special assessment only on hospitals, not on any other business, not on any individual citizen, but to collect from the hospitals in the jurisdiction, those dollars then serving to unlock federal dollars, helping hospitals to narrow that reimbursement gap. So essentially, the governmental entities, like Pasco County, if you choose to proceed, would collect these dollars through a special assessment against the hospitals only. Those dollars come to the county, the county submits them to the state, and then those dollars qualify for federal match, again dollars Florida had historically left on the table, and then those funds follow the patient. So hospitals receive a reimbursement increase, getting them closer to 80 cents on the dollar for Medicaid services and taking them into getting some reimbursement for their charity care. Instead of the historical 1% that most hospitals received, it will be about 8%. So again, not solving the problem entirely by any means, but helping hospitals provide this quality care. So Pasco County now has an ordinance before it that would establish this assessment on hospitals only. Now, nobody gets a bill today. The hospitals will bring a rate recommendation before this board at a later point, but this is the framework creating this assessment. Pasco is not the first county to have this opportunity. In 2021, 15 jurisdictions started with this program, and they've all come back. In fact, it's only grown. So by the end of this year, we could have a total of 26 jurisdictions. At the time this slide was created, Ocalusa was just considering. They've now scheduled September 3 to be when their vote on the ordinance would be decided. So 26 jurisdictions doing a program just like this, assessing the hospitals, helping them access the federal match. The hospitals will be before you again September 17. That's when they'll bring the rate recommendation. The board will vote on that rate recommendation, and if you decide to proceed, that's when the hospitals get the bill. Again, those dollars come to the county, go to the state, unlock federal match, and help the hospitals continue providing this type of care. And then October 1 is when the county essentially messages, yes, state of Florida, yes, state Medicaid agency, we in Pasco County want our hospitals to be part of this program. We do intend to levy the special assessment. We do intend to help our hospitals access those federal dollars. Now, this program is of significance to the hospitals in Pasco County. Letters of support were signed by all that would be subject to the assessment. And here today in the room, we have representatives of Bay Care and from Advent Health speaking for all of the hospitals in Pasco County. We have Mike Merle. He is the president and CEO of Zephyr Hills, Date City, and Connerton, the Advent facilities there. Mike, if you would mind.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Good to see you this afternoon, Commissioner Oakley and the rest of the commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. And as Colleen mentioned, my name is Mike Merle, and I'm CEO within Advent Health. And I'm also speaking on behalf of my CEO colleagues within Pasco County, hospital colleagues within Pasco County this afternoon. Thank you for considering this proposal, and I'm speaking on behalf of them in support of the local provider participation fund ordinance that you are considering today. This ordinance will allow private hospitals like ours to provide care to those in greatest need by unlocking federal funding to address our charity and uncompensated care. Private hospitals and health care systems across Pasco County provide critical needed health care services to our local community. Florida's growing network of local hospitals' special assessments has been a tremendous success, generating funds to support hospitals and bolster regional economic impact at no cost to residents or businesses. This funding provides hospitals within Pasco County the ability to meet the growing needs of our underserved community and provide high-quality care to patients within Pasco County. So again, thank you for your support on this matter, and we incredibly look forward to working with you together within the county on this critical program. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No?
Well, I had asked her if we would see anything, but no, it's just between you and the patients and the feds.
And the state, correct.
Right?
That's correct.
The dollars are distributed by the state of Florida. So after they get the federal match, the dollars are distributed by them to the hospitals with the limitation that they follow the patients, they track the volume of care. So when Advent Health is providing care to Medicaid patients or to low-income uninsured, those dollars are designed to follow those patients. So it's designed to incentivize and increase access to care.
I wish we were doing this earlier, so I'm glad it's coming to us.
Yeah, thank you.
I did mention that at the national level, I was trying to get the name of the, of what it's called, and maybe the county attorney can help me, but when someone is arrested and they come to our county jail, and if they're on federal medical benefits, they're ended. And they could be in there for months, they could be in there for weeks, but their federal benefits are ended, and so are their families. So at the national level, I've been working to fix this. And so as the National Sheriff's Association, we've managed to fix it to the point where states who suspend those benefits get to have their, get to have them reinstated. But states who suspend benefits, we're not taking care of yet. So love for you to take that on too, because it costs us millions and millions of dollars. And I think it really adds to recidivism when people who are jailed and not getting their medicine, when they get out, you know, they go right back in. Be good to get that fixed once and for all.
Yes, for Mr. Merren.
Mr. Starkis, right on point, sure. We'd love to work with you one night. We've brought this up here over and over, and everybody kind of wanted to get a change. I think with your power, I'll say, and your group would probably get together and make this happen. It'd be a better problem.
Yep. When it was presented to us, we all felt the same way. We wanted this to happen and to tie that gap together that hospitals weren't without that money. So it's very important for y'all, and we know that, so. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So with that, do we take a motion?
Public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak to this item before we take a vote? Seeing no one coming forward.
To approve?
I got a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on line.
Yes, sir.
Just for point of clarification, we have provided the clerk's office with a revised effective date for the ordinance that is consistent with, excuse me, consistent with your board motion, allowing them to file an electronic copy rather than a certified copy.
Excuse me, Jeffy, if I may also add, we also have a revised release that's also part of your packets today.
Okay. Also, I forgot to ask, we have anybody on WebEx which speak or?
Not to speak to this item.
For this item, okay. So that, accept a motion.
I did, I did a motion, and I think someone second.
I do a second?
And under discussion, that policy that I was talking about that we're trying to change, it's called the Medicaid inmate exclusion policy.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Row call vote?
District 2, Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkis.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. That brings it to a 5-0 vote, and it passes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will move back to P 52.
Mr. Chairman, we have proof of publication of the hearing of this item in the June 5, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Niktara's Pethos, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item P 52 is PEG 240336. This is the ordinance to create Section 1106 Car Wash Facilities Standards. It was requested, recommended continuance to the September 3, 2024 reported county commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM here in Date City.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0, move to P 53.
We have proof of publication of this item in the Tampa Bay Times, June 5, 2024.
And there's no action required on this item?
That's correct. Item P 53 is PEG 240320. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, amending Section 402.2 zoning amendment, MPUD, master plan unit development, substantial requirements; Section 403.1 preliminary development plans, residential, substantial requirements; Section 403.2 preliminary development plans, non-residential mixed use, substantial requirements; Section 403.3 preliminary site plans, substantial requirements; Section 403.7 masquerading, substantial requirements; Section 404.3 mining permits, application requirements; Section 404.4 construction and demolition debris disposal facilities, operating permits, application requirements; Section 404.6 yard trash processing facilities, application requirements; Section 809.2 cultural resources generally; Section 809.4 standards for surveys and analysis; Section 809.8 historic cemeteries, specific requirements; and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for separability, inclusion into the land development code, and an effective date. This is, this action required, there's no action required on this item for the Board of County Commissioners, as this is the first of two public hearings. The second hearing will be held on August 21, 2024, at 1:30 PM. And we can do a presentation if there's a desire, please.
Okay. And there's no action today on this item, except is there anyone here that may not be at the next reading of this?
No, no, this is, this is your first of two public hearings, so.
Yeah. So this is the first of two public hearings. Does anyone here wish to speak to this item today? Seeing no one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I wouldn't mind seeing a presentation.
You want that?
I wouldn't mind seeing a presentation, even if it's free, just to go through it.
Yes, I haven't really been briefed on this, so.
So the proposed amendments to the Land Development Code are for historic and cultural resources. This would be Land Development Amendment Number 71. These are the dates on which this has gone through the horizontal roundtable, and on June 20, we went to the local planning agency, which found the proposed amendment consisting of the conference of plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. These are the changes that are being proposed in the Land Development Code. Survey shall be consistent with current state cultural resource assessment survey, Phase 1 criteria, effective as of August 15, 2016, and subsequent updates. A CRAS created prior to August 15, 2016 shall be reviewed by a consultant and recertified if it meets said standards. All recommendations made by the consultant shall be implemented by the applicant. This is, this particular amendment generated the most conversation at the local planning agency to make sure that we got the date correct on the cultural resource assessment survey and what needed to be done once a CRAS Phase 1 was in hand. The rest of the amendments are less substantive than the initial one. It replaces some language instead of removing the word, having the word identify removed and replaced with list and or add or record the information because we don't want to identify on maps or plans where the location of archaeological resources might be. And this carries through basically to multiple sections of the code. Again, the same language in Chapter 800 with the CRAS survey. It's repetitive throughout the code, so all the different code changes are being updated. This is the actual code language that's proposed within the amendments in the packet, as I read it in the table. And you can see the types of amendments that are scattered throughout the code, fixing certain vocabulary. 403.2, 403.3, 403.7. They all carry very similar tax amendments. And again, the same thing in Chapter 800. The Planning Development Economic Growth Department recommends you accept public comment. No action is necessary for this item for today. We just will come back to the board again, and I'll just leave it at that.
You satisfied with that? You need more?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So is anyone, there's no one here to speak today to this item? Seeing no one coming forward, anyone on WebEx?
Not for this item.
Not for this item, okay. We'll move from this item to P 54.
We have proof of publication of this item, July 10 and July 28, 2024, editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
And for that last item, just for purposes of the record, the second hearing is to be held on August 21, 2024, at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P 54 is?
You want that?
PEG 240396. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, providing for amendments to Section 1302.3 School Impact Fees to make such section consistent with the 2024 School Impact Fee Study and to adopt such study to increase the amount of school impact fees, providing for additional amendments as necessary to ensure internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, separability, inclusion into the land development code modification, and an effective date. This is the first hearing of the proposed ordinance before the Board of County Commissioners, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Ray Gadd, Deputy Superintendent of the School Board.
Good afternoon. Ray Gadd, Deputy Superintendent of Schools, 6504, West Area Loop, Landville Lakes, Florida, 34638. I don't think there's very many opportunities where we're all together, but I want to take a moment to introduce you to our board, who's, almost all of them are here except one, and that's Allison Crumley, Cynthia Armstrong, Colin Bodwin, Megan Hardy, our chair, Allison Crumley, our co-chair. And we also have our CFO with us, Tammy Taylor, Assistant Superintendent Monica Miles, Betsy Coon, Assistant Superintendent, Chris Williams, our planning director. And then also in the back, don't hold us against this, but we have our consultants. I'd like to accomplish three things today. I'd like to summarize how we got here. Then I'd like to turn it over to our consultant, if you have any questions. And then our board chair would like to make a closing comment, if that's okay with the commission. Before we conducted this study, we brought the builders in for a face-to-face meeting. And the first thing we asked them, is there anything specifically you want us to look at? And we had a robust conversation about impact fees. You know how those robust conversations go. So we spent a couple hours discussing the fees with the builders. And frankly, I was amazed, when we got done with that meeting, one of the builders looked at all of us and said, you know, all of our kids need good schools. So we conducted the study. After we conducted the study, we held a Zoom call with the same group of builders. A few days later, they approved the impact fees as we're going to present to you today or as you have in your packet at their board meeting. We were recently recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and it's an incremental increase, which I know that you're familiar with. I'm guilty at the Planning Commission, I was doing our consultant's job and telling you all about the study. This time, I'm going to let our consultant do his job. After all, we're paying him a lot of money. And I invite you to ask him tough questions, and we want to get our money's worth out of him. So without further ado, Carson Beis with Tischler Beis.
Friends are like that, who needs enemies, right?
Well.
In jest, Ray is a really good friend of mine, and it's my pleasure to be in front of you today, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have a presentation. I'll be respectful of your time and get through it quickly. A little bit about us, we specialize in impact fees and fiscal and economic impact analysis. We're based in Bethesda, Maryland, at Boise, Idaho, and we've done quite a bit of work in the state of Florida, particularly as it relates to school impact fees. In terms of the methodology, we have three components as part of this study. We have the construction of additional classroom space, a land. Uh, we have the construction of additional classroom space, a land component, and also a component for buses. Uh, we took the incremental expansion or consumption-based approach, which is the standard approach for impact fees. It's very formulaic in terms of how it defines levels of service. It looks at, you know, what is the average square footage of the classrooms, uh, our students see at the elementary, middle, and high school levels? What does it cost us to build additional square foot of space? What does it cost us to buy acre of land, et cetera? And as you probably are aware from other impact fee discussions for, for the county's impact fees, that, you know, one of the things we have to guard against with the impact fees is new development paid twice. Once through the impact fee, and then again through other forms of revenue. And so we do have three credits baked into the methodology. That is the future payments on existing debt, uh, future penny-for-Pasco sales tax revenue, and then future local capital improvement millage that would be used for capital expenditures related to school capacity. Part of the, the showing, or establishing the nexus is we have to show that the school district has been growing in terms of enrollment, and that growth is going to continue. If you see here at the bottom table, we are projecting an additional 13,700 students over the next 10 years within the school system. Uh, we also have to determine what the demand is from different housing units. And so we calculate, calculate what we call pupil generation rates or student generation rates. And those are shown at the top of the table. And those are, that, those numbers are based on geo-coded data from the school district's GIS system. And as is the case in most communities we work with around the country, single-family units generate a higher number of students than mobile homes and multifamily units. And that is the case here, as you can see, a single-family unit generates about, uh, .385 students. So in other words, what that means is for every 100 new housing units, you just expect to generate about 39 additional public school students. So this table is a little bit outdated, given the, the date of our study. I think there's a, an additional school that's being contemplated. But, but at the time of the study, there were 4,160 additional planned student stations over the next five years. Now, what we do with that is we look at those enrollment projections you saw on the previous slide and plug in those additional student stations to look at, you know, what is our enrollment to capacity at the end of the 10-year period? And even with the planned student stations at the K through 8 level, uh, the district would still be at 99% of its capacity at the end of the 10 years. Although there are not additional student stations planned in the next four to five years at the high school level, it is clear from this table that there will have to be additional student stations in years 5 through 10 because you can see here that this, the, the high school level will be at 100% of its available capacity at the end of the 10-year period. So here, we're going to talk about the fact, the cost factors used in the analysis. And for land, rather than speculate on what the district would have to spend on land in the future, we look at past purchases, uh, which total 200, uh, two, you have 237 acres at a total cost of about $14.2 million. And that's results in a weighted cost per acre of $59,846. We also look at recent construction costs, uh, for four different projects. And we get a weighted average of $361 a square foot. And then we also look at, uh, what is the inventory of the district buses? And what does it cost us to buy a bus in today's dollars? And we get our cost per student that way. So this table here summarizes the factors that you've seen in the, in the other, in the previous slides. Working our way from the top, we see the student generation rates. And then we apply those cost factors for the construction cost per student, the land cost per student, the bus cost per student, to get that gross capital cost you see in the middle. Then we deduct from, from that cost those credits to get our net costs, uh, per, per student at 37,450 at the K through 8 level, and then 30,731 at the, uh, 9 through 12 level. So this table shows the maximum supportable fees in green. Uh, you may be aware that there were some changes to the state's impact fee statute three or four years ago, which limits the increases in fees to 50% unless you go through a, a process called demonstrating extraordinary circumstances. As you can see here, the, the total fee for single family exceeds the 50%. So we're statutorily limited to $12,492. Then at the multi-family, it's 6576. In a mobile home, uh, the statutory limit is $6,666. This shows the proposed fees, which the single family is, is less than the, the, uh, the stat, or the, the maximum supportable. Again, the changes to the Impact Fee Act state that any increase above between 25 and 50% has to be implemented in four equal increments. So this shows the proposed, uh, implementation schedule for all three housing types. And in year four, uh, it would, it would kick into the multiple, or the maximum amount of, or the recommended amount of $12,328, 6389 in multifamily, and 6477 for the mobile home units. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the study.
Any questions for the board? Ms. Jager?
I just wanted to see the slide again where it, um, had the different cost per square foot for the different locations. Cause I missed that one.
Kick back in here. Nope, sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you. It should be about five back, I think. That's one. No, no, go back the other way. There you go. Is this the slide you're referring to?
Yes. Just curious, why, why is it such a big price difference?
Between which?
Per square foot, like, wait, can you take the 294 or the 490?
Right, right, and, and I may beg assistance from staff. But in our experience, it's cheaper to, to build a complete school because you've got a bigger footprint and it also includes, you know, the, the athletic complexes, those facilities where if you're doing an addition, it's a more, it's a more concentrated effort and it doesn't have those other elements that sort of bring down the weighted cost per, per square foot. So typically additions tend to be more per square foot in our experience than an entire school.
Gotcha, okay. Sorry, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. We'll go to the, the housing stock breakdown. Rates, please.
You mean the student generation?
No, the multifam, resident, single fam, and.
The last one?
Mobile?
It was close to land.
The rates or the actual?
The rates. So is there a way to bump multifamily and decrease single family? And I say that because Live Local Act's looming out there. And it'll be there for a while. And I, I'm kind of of a mindset, if Live Local Act is going to be hanging over our head, that we, we bump these impact fees for all the multifamily product. We offset it with the single family. I, I'm generally, I'm going to speak gen, generally a big picture of our overall impact fees. We keep pushing single family impact fees and increasing them to what they are. I'm just, it goes back to the affordability of the, of the single family home and having families being able to afford a home and the potential erosion of the single family homeownership value that we all, I think, in this room share. It's kind of a, 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 a tough one there. So is there a way to bump the multifamily and decrease the single family?
Well, it's complicated.
Yes.
I think I'll handle this for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, no.
Lifeline.
The answer is no. Um, the, the problem is that the law with regard to impact fees, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Weiss elaborate a little bit, is that you have to treat all types equally. So he's done an, an, an analysis, he has generated fees based on the impact of what those types of units.
Generate.
Generate. And so you, while you could lower them all at the same, you know, you could, you could do 85% of value of, of what the study showed, you can do 100%. Then you have the state statute that kicks in. But you can't charge multifamily more to make up a decrease you want to have in single family. If, that, that will create a challenge point for your impact fee as a whole. And, uh, it would not be my legal advice to do something like that.
But you're saying we can't, is what I'm kind of hearing. You advise not to.
No, my, you can, you'll be challenged, you'll lose.
There's your choice.
I mean, that, 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 when I say I advise it, that means that I don't think that there's a way that we can defend you on it. You can lower them all proportionally, but then that's not going to get the school district the amount of money that they have budgeted for their, for, uh, their school construction. But you have to, when you do that, you've got to do them all at the same percentage. You can't pick and choose.
And we can't legally justify higher fees for multifamily and mobile home. The number, I mean, the, the study doesn't support.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
So one thing that could be a factor though, that would, you could justify, if a apartment complex comes in and gets a 75% tax break.
Yep.
You can justify, there's a difference of what, what the cost is of that project coming in. So it may not have happened yet with one, but if one does come in, I think we should be able to find, try to find a trigger for that. Cause it is a risky situation that's out there right now.
Only if the school board is using taxes for construction. It, it would not, you might be able to make that argument, but the dollars they are collecting for operations wouldn't be, wouldn't be appropriate for impact fees anyway. So I, you'd have to do, you'd have to do a balancing of the construction dollars that their millage is going to.
Agreed. So can you figure out how much construction dollars are going toward the schools based upon this? It's got to be a part of your factor in there, in those complexes.
That's, that would vary on a case-by-case basis as well.
Mr. Gadd said he wanted you to earn it today.
And you've already credited the, the capital improvement millage within the fee study itself also. Or discounted the fee based on that future shift of revenue.
I have a question on the multifamily.
Okay, Ms. Starkson?
Multifamily is apartments, townhomes, garden homes?
Townhome technically is a single-family attached unit. So single family who's detached, attached unit, so a townhome would be part of that. Yeah, so it's duplexes, apartments, condominiums, condominiums.
Wait a minute, a duplex is.
Multifamily.
But an attached townhome, which is kind of a duplex?
Has to do with the census definition and whether they share a common wall or not. And your ordinance will define the different types of.
Our towns are flat.
So, uh, and on, on multifamily, do we distinguish between studio and three-bedroom? Or is it averaged out?
It's the average, the average unit size, or the average unit.
So you take, you add up how many three-bedrooms there are and how many studios?
It doesn't matter if it's one-bedroom or three-bedrooms, it's the same rate for the studio.
Well, legally, they get away with that because a studio is probably doesn't have any kids where a three-bedroom does. So legally, how do you justify?
There is no problem. Legally, it's, it's more of a, you know, the courts fall on the reasonableness test. And some jurisdictions choose to do impact fees by size of home or number of bedrooms. Some choose to do the traditional single-family versus multifamily versus mobile home. So fees are done both ways, just a matter of preference.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. So to try to dissect this would be really tough, to try to fight it would be even tougher. Probably take more time and money, I think.
Yeah.
The key would be that we unite with the school board to go fight this live local in the future.
I was just trying to get at you. Uh, well, I would say that, um, I think, I haven't received one letter, one call from anybody in opposition to this. I think we have a great working relationship with our school board, unlike some others. And, um, I, I like the way this is broken out in four years. And I think, you know, the work's been done for us, and I think we should move for approval.
Mr. Chairman? I'll, I'll second. I got a public hearing.
No action today.
Oh, no action today?
No, there's action today. No, there is action, but you got to wait.
Well, their chair wants to speak and then we have public comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good afternoon, as mentioned, I am Megan Harding, I do serve as the Chair of the Pasco County School Board. We are very grateful for all the support you have given us in the past, and I appreciate you allowing me, giving me the time to speak this afternoon. This afternoon, I wanted to take a few moments and make some comments on the impact fee proposal. This increase will assist us in keeping up with the construction costs in our ever-growing school district. And as you know, our county is growing at a very rapid rate, so this would assist us in that. The impact fees will also allow the school district to balance new schools to support new growth while allowing us to renovate our existing school with penny funds. Both of these are equally important. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to support this proposal as well, and we're very grateful for that. The board wanted to take a moment to thank the Tampa Bay Builders Association for their support and strong stance that good schools build good communities. We have worked together with the Faison Approach over four years, so there's not a huge jump all at once. Again, on the behalf of the county, on behalf of the Pasco County School Board, we appreciate your support so we can continue to serve our communities and provide the world-class education that all our students in our community deserve. Thanks.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, is anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this item today? And there's no action required today on this item.
This is your first of two public hearings. It looks like from, I'll have to get Terry or somebody to confirm. It looks like your second hearing is on August 21st, 2024, at, in Newport Ritchie, at 1:30 or sooner after.
Ms. Chairman? Yes. Just a one further point, the, the key to this is not, it's not a tax on people living here, it's a tax on people, people coming in. So it's making growth pay for itself.
Right. It's, it's kind of like, we're buying new homes, it's on those properties, so, as we grow.
Okay. Anything else from the board? No action is required, no one come forward to speak, anyone on WebEx to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So we'll move to item P 55.
We have proof of publication of this item, uh, the hearing of the item at this time in the April 17th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 55, Dictarius Pitos, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item P 55 is DRD 24-0036. This was an ordinance to create invasive species management program. The recommended board action is to withdraw from consideration, no further action planned.
Wait, 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 wait a minute. Is this our invasive?
Yes, there's a.
Why is it?
There's a different ordinance following up on this one.
You're going to do a different one?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to get it done for October? Well, I don't understand why withdrawing it, not just fixing it.
Hold on, I believe that answer is coming forward.
Good afternoon, Brent Tippin Development Review. Yes, there are, we actually have kind of changed the direction on it. So keeping this original, going down the path with continuances was going to be confusing further down the road. So we didn't want to do that, we just withdraw this one and we're bringing the new one forward.
Okay, and when, when will it be in front of the Planning Commission?
Uh, I don't know the exact date, but it's, it's not going to be substantially delayed, from what I understand.
Not to, not going to be that?
It's going to Planning Commission, I believe, tomorrow, uh, Thursday.
Okay.
So, and it's, it's, it's still on track.
And you guys think tough.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. When, when do you expect to show the board the new version?
Uh, individual meetings.
Yeah, I think you're going to show it to the planning commission coming up, I think we should have seen it already, but, yeah.
Okay, I will make sure that we reach out to each one of you to, to have the discussions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. So this item is withdrawn? So we're ready for P 56? Okay?
We have proof of publication on this item, uh, in the July 10th, July 17th, July 24th, and July 31st editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item P 56 is PEG 24-0400. It is an ordinance establishing the Hope Innovation District Pursuit to Chapter 190 Florida Statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote and authorize the Chair to execute the original list of the ordinance. And there's a presentation if you'd like.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to this item?
We have one person, but I believe they're probably a representative, uh, of, um, Jonathan Johnson.
Okay.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Name and address for the board?
Jonathan Johnson, 107 West College Avenue, Tallissee, Florida 32303, with the law firm of Q-Tech Rock, on behalf of the applicant. We're just here to answer any questions and appreciate all of your staff's time and assistance to get us to this point.
Mr. Johnson, just a question as far as like this CDD coming through. One of the things I've tried to work with staff, and I know all of us are concerned with, and try to get it done, is the connection of Sunlake Boulevard going to the south. It's not a long stretch. Is that part of your CDD's objective to, to fund it, or?
So, uh, we do have a number of roadway dollars included as potential projects in the petition. I don't know whether that specific roadway is included.
Okay. I hope you work with our engineer and get back with us, because we do think that's a, a great traffic reliever, so.
I'll make sure.
I'd be happy to work with you.
I think we're built. My beef is we could, it was built without any sidewalks or any bike multi-use path on the first half of it. And probably not the most attractive bridge I've ever seen. I, I, we definitely want to work with you so that on your half of it, we do something a little elevated. And I mean it, style and substance.
Understood, mister. I'll make sure that we follow up.
Yeah.
Any other questions for you?
No, I wouldn't move approval. It's the CDD district.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing, so is anyone signed up for?
No, sir, only Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Uh, anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one, anyone on WebEx?
No, sir.
Okay. Then public comments closed. Privilege of the board. Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, excuse me, roll call vote.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Stark.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yegar.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariana.
Aye.
District One, Commissioner, Chairman O'Phillies.
Aye. Motion passed, five-zero. Move on to P57.
Uh, again, this item, uh, appeared in the notice of the hearing of this item appeared in the July 10th, July 17th, July 24th, and July 31st, 2024 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P57 is PEG 240412. This is an ordinance establishing the Pasadena Ridge Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes here with a recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation in excellent desire.
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, first time I think I've really seen this map. I guess we have some parcels in the middle who didn't opt in? Is that what's going on there?
Yes.
So... Is that a ro, I see that they're separated by this little narrow strip. Is that a road?
Well, we'll get the answer in a second.
Yeah, and it's going to be interesting how they're going to expect those folks to... I mean, are these going to be private roads in here?
We'll, we'll let the, the applicant speak to it.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Johnson, 107 West College Avenue, Tallissee, Florida, Q-Tech Rock, also on behalf of the applicant. So we do have, uh, four parcels that are included within the internal boundary that we don't own, nor do we have the owner's consent to include them at the present time. Uh, we have identified two of those parcels which are, you see in blue, uh, as future expansion parcels, because we do have an option on those, so we have the ability to acquire them and include them in the future. In, in reviewing and discussing with your staff, the criteria for creation of the district is sufficiently contiguous, sufficiently compact. The statute does explicitly contemplate, uh, that you may have out parcels within the boundaries of a district, you just have to identify them. So we're very comfortable that the development as approved under the existing PUD can proceed, and that the district can serve its function to finance, own, and maintain the infrastructure regardless of whether those out parcels ever come in.
Right, um, so on the, the top right parcel, it looks like it bisects like a ranch, like the, um, ranch yard, just from my experience of our ranch yard. Is that? It looks like some of the, some of the buildings are in your property and some aren't. It's just kind of odd. I, I mean, I'm going to vote for approval, I just, I just never seen anything like this, so.
I, those, I think those are, as identified in petition, are owned by Evans Properties. Um, I, I can't really speak to whether there's a, the, the building current status, um, but, but they are not supposed to be included at the present time.
Uh, so, um, I want to ask the county attorney, I guess these are, um, identified by, um, boundary line, you know, legal boundaries? Because to me, it looks like splitting that person's house in half. So I don't understand how some of their houses in it, some isn't, the property, so is that?
There may, there may be a boundary dispute between, between owners, but the way the petition should be filed is that all of the owners who are, who are being subjected to the CDD are petitioners. And those who are not, who are, who have not signed, who have not given their consent are excluded. Um, so I can't, I mean, this could be a GIS error. Um, I, I see what you're talking about is that the bold yellow line goes down through what looks like the middle of a house, but.
Yeah.
Um, I would be happy to speak to that. I mean, uh, what we have is, is a graphic, uh, and it does have, you know, very thick lines. If you look at the legal description, which is attached to the petition and is also therefore incorporated into your ordinance, it does specifically describe the properties. We have 100% consent from all of the owners of the property who are proposed to be included within the Community Development District, uh, as well as the, um, ability in the future to bring in those expansion parcels once they're acquired. So there is no existing home that is being split by this, by this little descriptor line. I think what we just have is a graphic where we have, you know, broader lines than otherwise would really be indicated. If we drew it as precise, we wouldn't be able to see it on the map.
Okay, and, uh, county attorney, I'm talking about, you know the, where those four squares are in the middle? They're not white squares, trapezoids or whatever. There's two that are hatched. I'm talking about that property right there, it's like going right through it. That's where I have it.
But I, I agree with Mr. Johnson. The petitioner is the one who has the most at risk.
Yeah.
So I am sure that they have calculated where their ownership ends and where their ownership.
We have indeed, and I think what we just have, it's, it's, it's hard to show the line without looking so thick that it looks like it's going over that, but we are not including any property that we don't have consent, nor are we splitting any existing homes.
And that doesn't come back on us, that will come back on them if there's some issue. And, and for those people to access their property, they, they will come in on your roads? I don't.
So, the roads, with the roads that are, that are within and financed by the CDD, those are all public roads, there's no access restrictions over them, so there, there should be no impediment whatsoever for anyone accessing their property.
And, and I'm guessing they access it from that road that runs parallel, that, that's going east-west, and your construction can't keep them from coming to the property?
It, it will not keep them from accessing their property at all.
I just, I've never seen one with parcels in the middle like that.
Remember, this is a financing vehicle, so if a plan of development, the MPUD, which I'm assuming you've, since they're showing a boundary that you've already approved, would, would be what would allow them access or not, you know, they, they can't cut, they can't cut historic access off unless they provide other access.
Correct, agreed totally, on behalf of the petition.
Okay. Those were all my questions.
We have no one else signed up.
No one else signed up. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Move to approval?
Okay, second. Got a motion, a second? Is this?
A roll call.
It's a roll call, roll call vote?
Did you have a second?
Yeah, I did.
Second, ready.
Okay. Commissioner Two, or District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Stark.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yegar.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariana.
Aye.
District One, Chairman O'Phillies.
Aye. Motion passed, five-zero. Okay. We'll move to, uh, P59. We've already done 58.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
P59, uh, we have proof of notice of this meeting by affidavit from, by mail and posting by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the procedures?
I would like to hear the rules for the public hearings.
Yep. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If sta, if staff or Planning Commission recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If the staff or Planning Commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or Planning Commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request that the petition be, the petition, a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's land development code. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear them in?
Please. If those, anyone who is desiring to give testimony in the rezoning matters, if you'd please rise. Are there anyone other that are desiring to give testimony in these matters? Do each of you swear or affirm that testimony you will give is the truth so half you got? Please confirm when you come to the podium that you have been sworn.
Okay. All right, item P59.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Denise Hernandez, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. Item P59 is PEG 247597. It's a zoning amendment in, under the name of Copalakis West MPUD SR52 Limited Partnership. We request us to continue the item to the September 3rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay. Please, the board, a motion or?
Move approval?
Move continue.
Continue?
Second. Move to continue?
I second.
I'm a second.
Time certain.
Okay. Time certain?
Uh, September 3rd, 2024, 1:30, Dade City.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, motion passes, five-zero. Move on to the next item, would be item number P60, and this is start of our consent items. First consent item. P60.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we have no one signed up to speak to any of the consent id, uh, correction. On item 63, we have a, a person signed to speak, Charles Hall.
I understand. We'll take him on the top.
So you want to do proof of publication for P60?
Publication on, uh, P60.
May 22nd, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you. Item P60 is PEG 240353. This is a development agreement to Pew East MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Polting Homes Company LLC. This is a, we're requesting that you approve the development agreement to design, permit, and construct improvements to Watergrass Parkway and Wells Road in exchange for transportation development fee credits. Um, this item, we did add in addition to one of the exhibits, which, um, under your attachments is listed as, as Exhibit B, the applicant has decided to call that Exhibit C. But it's just an addition to that exhibit that was provided to the clerk's office. Uh, this was presented to the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee on June 5th, 2024, and it went to the local planning agency on July 11th, 2024. We ask that you approve the development agreement.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one, we move on, leave it on consent and move to P61.
Proof of publication, Tampa Bay Times, June 26th, 2024.
Item P61 is PEG 247803. This is a zoning amendment under SA Development Partners LLC for change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district and C3 commercial light manufacturing district with specific use to a C3 commercial light manufacturing district. Um, with, the applicant has agreed to record voluntarily agreed-upon deed restrictions that request, that require a stubout to the west, sidewalk connection to the north, and those deed restrictions that are, um, specific to the Live Local Act. This comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Is anyone here to speak against this item? Against?
No, but I have, I want to make a comment on the one that was before. I'll need to pull it, but I want to make a comment.
The one before?
But you finish this one, and then I'll come back to that.
Is anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing no one, it remains on consent. P62?
Proof of publication, Tampa Bay Times, June 26th, 2024.
Item P62 is PEG 247808. It's a zoning amendment, uh, under the name of Dave Mitchell's Holding Company, Mitchell Clinton rezoning for a change in zoning from R1MH, Single Family Mobile Home District, and C2 general commercial district to a C2 general commercial district with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction related to the Live Local Act. Comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one?
I have a question, and I just.
On P62?
Yeah, and, and it would be the same to the one before. Um, because this is the area where, and I asked this in my meetings with staff, this is the area where the DOT and the county that we did not put in the multi-use path. Have we determined which side of the road that's going to go on? At this area, it's going to be on the north or the south side when we go to connect this to 301. Because on, this is on the north side, P61 is on the south side, it's got to go on one of those two sides. So I just want to make sure we're reserving the land that we need for that multi-use path.
Lead with Devine, Planning and Economic Growth Department. So there is currently, so going back to P61, um, you were saying that's on the south side. There's currently a 12-foot wide multi-use, um, path already in existence that was just put there, and that's on the north side. However, it stops at Curly Road, and it does not continue on. So after Curly Road going east, um, which is where P62 is on the north side, um, there's just two five-foot sidewalks on both sides. Um, I don't know if it's been planned for. I can tell you it's not curving in the CIP plan.
Well, that's a problem, because we've already met with DOT, and we know that they have the right of way, and we're going to talk about it at the MPO meeting, to put it back in from Curly to Prospect on the north side. We don't know. I think it's coming across the street from Prospect and on, but someone needs to make a decision here. And for you to not even know, I mean, oh, I'm so frustrated that, that we're so piecemeal that we're, we're trying to reserve this land.
Commissioner, if I might, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby PA have been sworn. This is not that section of 52 at all. This is on the west side of Marotta. This is not near Curly. This is about two miles away from this section you're talking about.
This, okay, so this one, wait, which?
This is, this is west of Marotta, just west of Marotta where the old broken-down, uh, I think it was like some kind of warehousing thing was there. But there's a multi-use path in the area on the north, and then there are the paths required by connected city that are, that's what the, the conditions and the deed restriction are about, are building the path connections that are required by connected city.
Okay, so there's already one on the north side?
I, I think we're confusing two of the items, which is P61 and 62.
Right.
So I think we're on P62.
Okay. Well, I asked a question on both, so.
It's not near that area.
All right, so P, P, so sixty-one is okay.
Sixty-two is what you're currently looking at on the area map.
Right, so I'm, I'm asking staff, I'm asking my planners, I'm asking somebody. When we fix the mistake of when we stopped the multi-use path at Curly from Prospect east, which side of that road is it going to be on?
Mr. Chairman, you want to just pull this on consent, and then we'll talk about it, because then we pull, do you want to flip a bigger map?
All right, then they can figure out who's going to act, who's going to tell us what the plan is.
Well, yeah, you asked staff for those answers before this meeting?
Uh, I did not have a meeting on sixty-two. I had a meeting on, no, I didn't have a meeting.
I mean, you've gone over these items, but you said you asked staff and you didn't get an answer. So I have a problem if staff didn't give you an answer.
I thought I asked, I asked, had a meeting on this Mitchell one, and I asked that, is that this Mitchell? Yeah, Mitchell. But they, but I didn't have an answer.
Denise, you have something to add?
It has to be addressed. But no one's addressed it, that's my problem.
I, I think we have a few people in, in the audience that can assist with that, including but not limited to our county engineer. Um, so is this being, it's, are we pulling that from consent, item P sixty-two?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, all right. And I believe the applicant is, um, is on, on WebEx on that one. That's Barbara Willhite. So that, that is the end of your consent agenda?
Well, uh, Pete, because P sixty-three has been pulled by myself.
Yes, and there's someone signed up to speak on that one as well.
And I, I did want to make a comment on the road, the road on the first one.
On P six, P sixty?
P sixty.
Okay.
This one, when I look at that, I know it's too late. I, I talked to Mike Galvin about this and others. This road section, it is a hundred and forty-two feet. That is, that is such a lot, that is a lot of land. And, and I, and hey, I'm all for, you know, I want the multi-use trail on one side and sidewalk on one. And, but to have from the edge of the road, um, all the way over twenty-nine feet, uh, you're, you're going to have to be running to cross these streets. And here we're trying to build walkable communities, and I believe these road sections are crazy expensive. And I think we've made a mistake in these, um, to, to, if you look on the right-hand side, or the left-hand side. Twenty-nine feet from the edge to the sidewalk.
Already under construction.
I, why, why did we do that? Clark, do you?
Yeah, I believe all these road sections are based on the villages of Pasadena Hills. So that's already approved within that village of Pasadena Hills.
Or barn or whatever you're saying. Um, I just think we were way, way out of line to be asking these guys to build roads like this. We would have been a lot better with more roads and smaller roads and a grid than having these gigantic expressways. Okay.
Mr. Engel?
David Engel, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. The road cross-sections are part of the VOPH plan.
Yeah.
We've retained Bill Oliver to do a new study for VOPH to ascertain if we could reduce these roadways. And I can't, I can't speak to this because it's already given, but in the future, in next year, we'll have new recommendations for roadwayways.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we need to do that.
And I guess P sixty-two is a fold, because there's, just want to let you know there's sidewalks on both sides of, uh.
Side, yeah, it's supposed to have the most used trail on one of those sides, so. I, I want to pull that for discussion. So, so you've got sixty and sixty-one, I think, for approval?
So you're pulling sixty-two now?
I'm sorry, which is the?
I'm confused.
She, she wanted sixty-two fold.
Fold, yeah. So I, I move to approve sixteen and sixty-one?
I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero on P sixty-one, P, P sixty is P sixty-one. Now, P sixty-two, what is the question?
Okay.
So, presentation for P sixty-two, Leam Devine, Planning and Economic Growth Department. P sixty-two, PowerPoint? Unless we don't want a presentation.
No, I just, all I'm asking is, we, you know?
So I, the, I think the, the question might be better suited to your transportation engineering department.
Right.
Um, because that would be with the CIP and extending that. I can just tell you where the current trail stops at Curly Road. It's on the north side.
Yes, on the right.
So I don't know if they would continue it on the north side, but I don't think there's any plan to. But that question would be for your, for Ted.
Okay. This is why we need that trail person hired, yes, yes.
Welcome, Nick.
Hi, I'm Ted.
Hi, Nick.
Good afternoon. Nick, you're a county engineer. The question is, are we going to build a wider sidewalk on the north or the south?
So you're aware, I think, um, the multi-use path, which was supposed to be all along the north side of fifty-two, connecting to the three oh one trail.
Was narrowed.
Was stopped at Curly by some, someone's decision, not ours. We had no knowledge that someone decided to stop that. So, uh, we met with DOT, we've talked a couple of times with them, that we wanted to continue. And they have said they have the right of way to continue it on the north side from Curly to Prospect. But from Prospect on,
To three oh one?
There's more challenges, and it was thought that it needed to go, my understanding, my recollection, was that it probably needs to go on the north side of Prospect. So we've been reserving, now every time a project comes through, we've been reserving.
North side of what?
I'm sorry, south side of Prospect.
South.
I mean fifty-two. Clinton, McKay, whatever you call it, from Prospect east.
Clinton Avenue.
Yeah.
You own Clinton Avenue.
And so we've been reserving that every time a project comes through here. I just wanted to be sure if you guys have had further discussions that that is where, where it's going to go. I'm going to ask that on every piece that comes up on Clinton. Because I don't want to have a project go and then we, then we have to stop, then, then it goes from a multi-use path to a sidewalk, the multi-use path. So.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess the, the best response I can give you at this point in time, we don't have a design for the pathway east of Prospect, putting it on the north or the south side, but there is a condition of approval on this rezoning that requires them to convey right of way from the center line of the road, consistent with our comprehensive plan width, which would give us the option to put a pathway on the north side, should this rezoning be approved, and this, and this petition conveys the land needed. It keeps our doors open.
Yeah.
Keep the door open, that's all I'm asking.
That's right.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But who's going to pay for the sidewalks? Shouldn't we have them paying for it?
I, I don't think that's, you know, I don't know if that's been determined yet, but at least we've got to make sure we have the land to do it.
Yeah, I agree with that, but then this, we're making all the other developments, put the trail in or put the sidewalk in.
That should be part of our development agreement.
And it should be something in front, and that should be done at the time of construction, not after the fact. So if we think we won eight or twelve, and we have the rights to ask for it, then let's, let's ask for it now.
You know, we don't have that one person in charge of all of this.
Mr. Chair, but right now?
I do believe they, they interviewed someone and are about to hire someone, so it's not me.
Mr. Chairman, you've got, I don't know that you've taken public comment on this, but you've also got an applicant on line that probably wants to address this.
The same one?
Sixty-two.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Barbara Willhite. So this property is already zoned C-two along, um, Clinton Avenue, and is already a site plan approved along Clinton Avenue that sets out the requirements for development along Clinton Avenue. What we're doing here is a cleanup, because we have a parcel under single ownership that has split zoning. We have commercial land use on the entire parcel, and we've got split commercial and residential. So this, this action is to rezoom the residential portion, which is to the back of the parcel. Um, so this, we really don't have the ability to effectuate anything other than what Mr., uh, your county engineer said, which is already in the staff area. We don't have the ability to effectuate this, we already, the property already has a full site plan. It's got a requirement for conveying some right of way, and ultimately all we're doing is cleaning up a split zoning situation on this property.
You know, when, when I look at the maps, when, when we look at the maps that are in our, um, uh, in the application, on, on one map, it goes all the way to the edge of Clinton, but on another map, there is a gap, um, between the parcel and Clinton. So it's a little.
So, Commissioner, I'd be happy to continue this, so I can be there person, and we can go over this with staff and have a little better answer presentation to you, if that's acceptable, continue.
Well, if that, if that comment, if that comment that the county engineer said is in there, that if we do, if it, if it is coming on that side, then there's land for it, that's all that we need. I don't need anything else.
Mention a minute ago. Mr. Chairman?
That's fine, too.
The deed restriction in your package. And just scrolling down, just added up.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, while he looks at that?
Yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Congratulations, but this is no way to spend the honeymoon.
I did show you a picture. I did show a picture.
Oh, I'm really happy to continue this. I'm, I'm not happy to continue. There's, there's an urgency on keeping this up. I'm happy so we can come back, maybe. Let's be all comfortable. Everything I ask you to do is something that you're comfortable doing, so I'm fine continuing to the next meeting in Dade City, and we'll, we'll bring it back and get a little more attention, make sure we can answer your questions.
Move to continue, so she can get back to her honeymoon?
Second. So let's.
It's still a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to this item today? Or when it comes back to Dade City at a time certain?
So if there's no one there, the, the motion would be to continue till September third at one-thirty or soon thereafter in Dade City.
Someone?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's continued.
Now it's what? Seven o'clock, go out dinner.
All right. Bye, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we will move forward to, um, P sixty-three.
Got proof of publication in the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four edition of Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by affidavits of certain.
Um, Nick, can I ask you a question? Are we allowed to talk during this?
Hey, Chairman.
No. No, you have no reporting.
Ask him a question?
Okay. Ms. Chairman? Okay.
Nine minutes.
Okay.
Uh, Denise Hernandez, Planning, Development and Economic Growth. On this item, just wanted to do a housekeeping before Mr. Petos does his presentation. There are two expertes, um, that will be submitted to the Clerk's office, one from Commissioner Mariano and one from Commissioner Yager on this item. Thank you.
I need to clarify that, um, the public notice also that this item, those postings were made for a previous meeting which was continued July ninth to this meeting. So this is a continuation of a previously posted meeting.
Okay. P sixty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P sixty-three is PEG twenty-four seventy-six eighty-three. It's a zoning amendment. Crossways MPUD, by Crossways three oh one LLC. Uh, the proposal before the Board of County Commissioners today is to change the zoning from ACAC Agricultural District on the subject property to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. There are two future land use designations on the site. The minority, uh, future land use designation is ROR Retail Office Residential, just a very tiny sliver on the north end. And the majority of the property is RES six, residential six dwelling this per gross acre. The purpose of the MPUD initially came in to allow a maximum of up to a hundred and thirty single-family homes. Uh, there is a second alternative or option to, uh, the, the purpose of this MPUD, which is to allow a maximum of up to forty single-family detached dwelling units uh, on the total twenty-nine point five acres, and we'll talk a little bit about that, uh, just a minute here. The location is on the northeast corner of US Highway ninety-eight, west of Old Lakeland Highway. This is where it's located in Pasco County. It's on the southeast, very southeast side of, uh, Dade City, right off of US ninety-eight. We zoom in a little bit further, and we notice.
It's on thirty-five A.
Yeah.
It lays on thirty-five A, not ninety-eight.
Yes, correct, Old Lakeland Highway. Uh, and then we zoom in, and we can see that it's right off of Old Lakeland Highway, and ninety-eight is just south of it. Uh, it is approximately one mile east of Dade City as you travel down, uh, ninety-eight. We have the Triple J MPUD, which is just to the east. This is a RES three MPUD that has approximately six hundred plus units approved for it back in two thousand and six. Nothing, that development has been built to date. Uh, and just on the east side of Old Lakeland Highway is the CSX rail line and right of way. Zoom in just a little bit further to see.
What's the zoning here right now? Because I thought you said it, but I didn't quite understand.
AC, agricultural district.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought.
And this is the actual zoom in of the subject property. Um, Old Lakeland Highway is just to the east, as we noted, and then you can see the CSX line. Uh, Messick Road is just to the south. Uh, the property does sort of stretch or make a reach for it, uh, but it does not get to US ninety-eight. This is the existing.
Oh, it's short of, short of ninety-eight?
It does not quite reach ninety-eight.
So it doesn't connect to ninety-eight there on that?
Not, not as the parcel lines are.
Okay.
Uh, this is the AC zoning district, um, the subject property. Here's the future land use situation. Majority of the site is RES six, as you can see, and then the very sliver on the top here is partly an ROR. Uh, this is the conceptual site plan, uh, indicated within the MPUD in the north-south orientation. Uh, this is essentially showing the road layout that the project is going to, uh, have regardless of whichever option they were initially considering, a hundred and thirty single-family homes or the forty half-acre lots. Uh, this is it turned on its site, so you can actually read the, um, plan now, north is to the left. Uh, same plan as before, with the, uh, road network. Uh, this was the initial idea with regard to the hundred and thirty single-family detached homes, where in blue is where you would have had the forty foot-wide lots, uh, and in red is where the fifty foot-wide lots would have been. The breakdown of those entitlements are as such. Here you would have had, in the first option, option A, you would have had forty foot-wide single-family detached lots, uh, equating to about sixty-five units. And another sixty-five units at the fifty foot-wide single-family detached lots for a total of a hundred and, uh, forty. If you can do my math right, no, a hundred and thirty. Uh, four point four dwelling units per gross acre. All homes on forty foot-wide lots would be reloaded. Prior to this meeting, however, the applicant has, uh, relayed to the Planning, Development and Economic Growth Department, they are, um, in line to do option B, uh, which would be the half-acre size of the family detached lots, which would mean that they would only get forty lots on the property. That would reduce the density down to one point three five dwelling units per acre. This is an update, uh, to the project, uh, as we've been preparing to bring this to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, if we go with option B, we'll have to, uh, update the conditions of approval of the MPUD and possibly bring back just a little quick revision to illustrate that. Nevertheless, we can delete.
No utilities, uh, no utilities here at all? Water, sewer, anything?
Right, there's no capacity.
No, no capacity at all for this? Is it, is it, it's not a part, it's still in the county, it's not a part of any annexation of Dade City or anything of that nature?
That is correct, unincorporated Pasco County. The takeaway from the surrounding conditions analysis is that the Triple J. The takeaway from the surrounding conditions analysis is that the Triple J MPUD is just to the west at 636 dwelling units, as I noted earlier. And along Old Lakeland Highway, there is a dedication of right-of-way that will eventually be needed. The right-of-way varies a little bit, but all of it will have to come from the west side of Old Lakeland Highway because on the east side is the CSX railroad. So any further widening of Old Lakeland will need to come from this subject property, at least along the extent of the project site. This is likely to be somewhere between 20 or so feet, maybe 30 feet of additional right-of-way. That will be determined more precisely at the time of preliminary development plan.
What is ADNAS?
Ultimately, the applicant agreed to voluntary architectural controls introduced in PM 26. And we recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the planning commission's recommendation to adopt a zoning amendment at the provision for the applicant to pursue only one option, Option B, which would allow entitlements to build 40 single-family detached units on half-acre sized lots that would utilize well and septic systems. This, on your agenda memos, is alternative motion number one.
Well, my problem, this, this project right here is the fact that there's no water sewer here at all. Half-acre tracks with well and septic, I think, too close. And this is sitting out in the rural area that's going to look like a subdivision out in no man's land because of the rural area and nature of that area that's by Old Lakeland Road. If, if we did well and septic, I'd want to see at least two and a half acre lots or better. To be rural nature. Okay? Any questions from anyone? Anyone? I think we have somebody signed up to speak.
Charles Hall.
Well, I do have a question, if you don't mind coming back up. I saw something called a J, a develop, is that a development near it when you showed the pictures?
Yes.
What, what is that?
It's a residential development. Triple J Ranch MPUD is approved for 636 dwelling units in a RES 3 flew back on November 8, 2006. See, they're starting through. And I can show the area. There it is.
And that, so what is that per acre? Did you say RES 3?
It was RES 3. So it would be three dwelling units per gross acre or less. And it probably is much less given the size of the property.
Problem what? I can't hear you.
Given, given the size of the property, which.
Do they have water and sewer out there as well?
No. No.
And, and then next to it, is that a mobile home park? It's called Country Air Manor?
Where's it at?
It's, it's that, that white stuff in the middle there?
Yes, that's it.
So what, what, are they, is that a mobile home park on sewer? Septic, I mean?
They're on their own.
How did they get septic like that?
They've been there for decades.
Many years.
Oh God, that's gotta be a mess.
No, they have their own plant.
Oh, they have their own plant?
They have a plant, yeah, packaged plant.
The density of Triple.
Which has been allowed for a long time.
The density of the Triple J MPUD is approximately 2.6 dwelling units per gross acre.
And this one is 1.3?
Under Option B, it would be 1.3.
It's less than. It's less than across the street.
Okay, let's, let's hear from Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall, I don't believe that you were sworn previously, so if you would, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you will give in this matter is the truth, so hope you God.
I do.
Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Charles Hall, 10,001 Old Lakeland Highway, Dade City.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to come and spend a few minutes to express my opinion and concerns. I will not be eloquent. I don't do this for a living. Approximately 30 years ago, my parents gifted my wife and me an acre of land if we should decide to move from Polk County back to Pasco County where I grew up. This is family.
Did it give us any notice? What was this saying?
About 25 years ago, my wife and I decided it's time for us to move back to Pasco County and we began to build, to build our house and we were told you have to have a 10-acre minimum for a house. Back then, we went to the county commission, the, we applied for rezoning and they granted rezoning for two separate adjacent acres of land for one house for one acre. The second piece was that we had friends that would want to join us up here. Since that time, we have inherited and been gifted additional acreage, which includes the Crossways proposed development. Things. Well, in, in doing our research, preparing to sell some of the property, it got time for us to, to get rid of part of it. So we decided to sell two or three 10, 15-acre pieces of property so people could build a house, have a, it would fit the rural setting with a decent house, maybe a barn with some cows, goats, whatever. We went to the planning council, the planning commission over in Newport Ritchie. They said the, we can sell the 10, 15-acre pieces of property. The first person can build a house, subsequent people cannot build a house because it would be a subdivision. Which, they said, there is a way around it. It will be expensive and take a long time. So we, we eventually sold 29 and a half acres, which is going to be the proposed Crossways subdivision. We know things are going to change, but we, we still have concerns and questions. We're concerned about the water table. If it's 40 single ha, uh, single-family houses or if it's 130, if the water table drops below our well level, what are our options? Another concern is with all the, the development that's going in along Old Lakeland Road, there's going to be a lot more traffic. And what are our options for our ingress and egress from our property? And I guess that beeping means my time is up.
You have one minute, sir.
You have one minute left.
Okay. Well, those two options are the main ones, those two concerns, the water and our ingress and egress to our property are the main, main issues right now. My suggestion would be that you approve minimum five-acre lots. If that will happen, I don't know.
Is this your property?
Yep.
No, it was.
The Crossways was. We were adjacent to it.
He sold it for nine and a half.
And they, they didn't make, they have agreed to put in an eight-foot block wall dividing, separating the development from our property, which we do appreciate that, but we still do have the other concerns.
So that's, that's your 10 acres just south of that property, right?
Yes, it's 11 acres.
11 acres, right.
Well, I see a bunch of mobile homes south of that property. One house.
He's got, he's got that one lot there, 11 acre lot. I don't think he wants 120 homes to the north side of it.
That looks like a barn. That, isn't that a barn? And your neighbor is this recycled can business?
There is another property between us and the recyclers.
It says a residential property across the street from you?
No.
That's.
It's a business.
Well, I personally think a half acre is okay. 40, 40 homes isn't gonna make a big difference on Old Lakeland Highway.
Well, it does when it's rural.
Mr. Chairman?
Is this part of the Pasco Rural Protection Area?
No, it's not. But it's, it's in my protection area because I get calls every day from my citizens over there not wanting these kind of developments to pop up in their neighborhoods when they're got a rural setting, just like Mr. Hall has. Mr. Mariano?
So is his time up or is he still on? Is his time still up?
Are you finished, sir?
I think his time's up, yeah.
Okay.
Your three minutes is up, Mr. Hall.
Well, my opinion, my opinion is the county, I don't like what the county did to us. We were zoned one house to 10 acres. We are in a rural setting. And now, it turns out, you want to allow, what, four and a half houses, 4.1 houses per acre?
I, you know, I'd love for staff to address that if it was one for 10.
It in no way fits the rural setting.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Hall, your time's up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
The other persons I have signed up.
Hang on a second. I got a question over here.
So don't we usually have the applicant come up at some point?
Yes.
Shouldn't the applicant, before we take public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, what happened there? Yeah.
I believe the other person signed up are.
Wait, no, we have that applicant speaking.
I believe they're representing, but.
Thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. And I have been sworn, just to give, I, I've been listening to the comments and I will address Mr. Hall's concerns about the water table as well as the surrounding area and what's being proposed. If you look at this development, it's actually north of Crossways. There's actually pretty intense industrial development already around this property. The north side has transport services. There's two operations that are running, you know, semi tractor-trailer operations. To the south, you have, I think the commissioner mentioned, R&amp;L Metals, which looks like it has some pretty heavy operations going on. It's a recycling of metals. Across the street, you have Pasco Fleet, which is another transport service with semis and they've got some pretty significant stuff going on on that property. And of course, Triple J, which already has the 636 single-family approved developments, you know, once there's some water and sewer that comes out there. You do have south of this property, and I think that was what you were pointing to, Appalachia Trails and Sunburst Hills, which are residential developments, they're on half-acre lots and they are on well and septic. The reason we're fine with Option B and, and your comp plan permits it, is it allows up to 49 units to be on well and septic in these subdivisions. Your actual comp plan policy provides for that. Utilities has signed off on us going to well and septic and of course, we're under the 49, we're at 40. So you actually have a comp plan policy that permits us to utilize well and septic and, and given the various concerns that were raised, that's why we decided to go in that direction. As far as the water table, I know that a TEF is around or he may be around to answer some questions, but obviously, any wells and septic that has to go through DEP as well as probably some SWIFT fund permitting, Sam will know better on that, but obviously, they're not going to allow any wells to impact, you know, someone else's wells on their property. And again, your comp plan allows for this. So I think some of that's probably been taken into consideration in terms of what's okay for, you know, health and safety. But there is significant industrial, non-residential development around this property. There is half-acre lots already existing around this property that are on well and septic. Our traffic study didn't show any impacts to, to Lakeland, Old Lakeland Highway. You know, the level service is good with or without this development. And of course, access management as far as turn lanes and stuff will be dealt with at the time of engineering. But we would like for support for staff's recommendation on Option B, given that your staff supports it, your comp plan supports it. It, it really based on what's actually really going on out around this property on the ground as well as what's planned long-term, it really does seem to be a good, good option for us. So we would ask for your support. Now I'm trying to answer any other questions.
Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. You cite the businesses, but the businesses that are in this area, they are trucking businesses, but they're not running at the volume of traffic that a high-density neighborhood would run on a daily basis. These businesses have been around a long time, well-established and anybody who's familiar with this area knows, you know, a lot of them are over-the-road trucking companies, so they load up and they take off three hours a morning or what have you. So I'm more inclined with Chairman's thought of two, two and a half acre home sites for this general area if we're going to go residential. If not residential, ideally, it's a, it's a, it's prime time for job creating, location next to other businesses. So I'm, I'm kind of aligned with the chair and not aligned with staff's recommendation on this.
I, I have a question.
Well, let's, let's finish the public comment because there may be some. Is anyone else here wish to speak to this item? That has not spoken? Is anyone on WebEx?
No, sir, not on this side.
Okay. Now, back to the board and we'll, have any questions?
Yeah, can you, um, can you?
Come back up.
Go close, can you go to, what is the property that is facing 98?
This one over here?
That has a house. Okay, see where that little piece comes down on this property, the proposed? Yeah. What is that property to the left of that corner there?
Right on the left here in the bottom.
What kind of zoning is that?
This one?
Yeah.
There's about three homes or, there may be trailers being up.
I see mobile homes. I see.
I was putting in there years ago.
So it says mobile home subdivision. And it's, there's four mobile homes there. I mean, I'm looking at the property praiser site. I don't know what's actually there because it looks to me like there's more there than is actually on the property praiser site.
It's an AC zoning.
Huh? That's, that's the same zoning as the other? But it has one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six, maybe seven homes on it. How is that possible?
It was done before our time.
Denise Hernandez, planning development and economic growth. We, we have not searched it, but we could look to see if there's a non-conforming use determination, if there's a pre, predating zoning, December 1st of 1975 situation going on there. I mean, I, if you give me a few minutes, I can probably see what I can find, if that's something that's, that the board needs to know.
Yes, okay, so I'm looking at Google Maps and I see one, two, three, four, five, six houses on, let me see how much land that is.
Would you like to make a pitch, sir?
You can't talk.
Sorry, sorry, Charlie.
How big is that lot?
11.7 acres.
That property, that property you're looking at there was approved many years ago, maybe 30 or so years ago. Mr. Keith was the owner of that at the time, had his home there and he put in those, he got approval to be able to put in the other four or five mobile homes. And they were rentals and helped him in his livelihood. But it was done by the commission years, 30 years ago.
That, those have been, that was approved over 30 years ago?
Yeah.
But I don't, I, I just think it's very inconsistent to say they have to be on two acres.
If you live out here where these folks live.
And he can have, you know, multifamily. And then you got industrial across the street. Actually, the best story I heard is should be considered that, is that best to be job creating rather than houses. But I don't think it's fair to say everyone else can have that kind of zoning across the street. You got RES 3, you got the mobile home park, but this guy, but you're in a rural area, so he has to have two and a half acres. I, I, I think we'd be very inconsistent with that kind of rule.
Ms. Chairman?
I can't help what, what was done 34 years ago when they set that up. The fact of it is, it's there and we're living with it. We don't have to keep having 40, 50-foot lots and half-acre lots in the rural area where the way of life out there is rural.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And then the point to it, that's on US 98? This road, this parcel doesn't connect?
This, no, that property doesn't. The property we're talking about does not connect.
So it's a different, it's a different road.
Those trailers right there are 98.
Right, the trailers are on 98, these are not.
That property is on 35A, which is the Old Lakeland Highway.
Right.
On the east side of that road, plus the railroad tracks on the opposite side of that road.
So the consistency part doesn't jive with me, that it's a different roadway, different type of roadway.
Right.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
What, what was the staff's recommendation?
For the Crossways MPUD.
For the crossways MPUD. The staff recommendation was to approve the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment, which would allow entitlements to build 40 single family detached units on half acre sized lots.
Yeah, I, I'm still, I think that's very consistent with the neighborhood.
I don't hate, I don't hate coming with that conclusion when you're out in the rural area and there's nothing else around there.
Well, you know what? When they approved that, it was in the rural area too, looking at it now. So.
So we keep building 40 foot lots wherever you want to?
Half acre is not dense. 40 foot, I'd say that's pretty dense.
You're talking about well and septic. That's half acre lots on that piece of property and put 40 lots, that's a lot of well and septic. Those are shallow wells, they're not deep wells.
What is the plan for utilities up there?
They're proposing well and septic on the 40.
No, no, what is the county's future plan?
City.
That's in the city?
I think the city would tie in, this would end up. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have water or sewer out in that area. Yeah.
A TEF Hana with Pasco County Utilities. That part of the county is far away from any central water or central sewer that we have right now. We are assuming low density, which is really, I mean, where it's not going to be served by water and sewer in this area. The only water close by is the Sunburst Wells, which is really just south of this project and it's at maximum capacity right now. We don't have any room to provide for this project and that's where we ended up deciding that this cannot get water.
Right.
So is that what's keeping that line of J or whatever that property was? That, that's what's keeping that other property from getting developed?
So I'm not sure about the density of Triple J.
What are you talking about, Triple J?
Triple J.
Triple J is, is probably well and septic. But, yeah, we, we are at maximum capacity right now and it's just serving the area around that Sunburst Wells on 98. There is a 12 inch water main that serves that area.
And I see Date City keeps annexing on the other side. Are they working their way, because once they annex it, it's going to be 40 foot lots, front loaded. Are they working their way this way too? Date City.
There are quite some distances.
They're sure, they're sure of this property.
Okay, well, those are.
Date City doesn't have water or sewer either for them.
Yeah.
For the ones they've already got annexed, they don't have water or sewer.
I'm not sure, we have to get Ms. Jaeger's. Ms. Jaeger?
I just might add a comment, but I'm, I'm going to go with you, Commissioner Oakley, just because this is your area, these are your people, you getting the phone calls and I'm not fond that there's no water or sewer, so.
So, in terms of the Date City annexations, I don't know what their annexation plans or priorities are. What I understand right now is that our map is showing the Date City boundary, the extent of the Date City boundaries. They have descended, so to speak, to Townsend Road and US 98. That's the furthest extent, south and east.
As a crow flies, it's not very far from this property, but.
Right, that's about a mile.
They still have, Date City is annexed a lot of property out this way toward 98, to the south of Date City, and they don't have supply of water or sewer for, for connecting to any of those properties. So they can't even have projects, new projects inside that annexed city area, because they don't have water and sewer for them. That's the same thing that happened to the west of Date City. Some they do, some they don't.
So.
They don't at this time.
So taking a big picture, so we don't waste a lot of people's time, is it the, is it our intent to take all this land that is not developed in this area and downzone it? So that, I mean.
No, you're, you're not talking about downzoning. You're talking about higher density.
No, I'm asking if, if all these.
It's one for 10 right now.
If, if all this land that's out here, are we wanting it to be two acres or more per unit? Because I don't think, what, what?
It's all rural.
What's in the comp plan now? Up there? And what's the plan?
It's agricultural land.
The, the particular area, subject site itself is Res 6.
Res 6.
On the east side of Old Lakeland Highway, you have agricultural rural, which is 0.2 dwelling units per gross acre.
How many? I don't like it, here you go, sir.
On the east side of Old Lakeland, beyond the CSX corridor, it's, the future land use is agricultural rural, which is 0.2 dwelling units per gross acre. To the south of the subject site.
So that's half acre lots? Point, no, 0.2?
No, that's over an acre lot.
That's five acre lots.
Five acre lots?
Yeah. To the south, at the inter, at the bridge here. Well, at the north, at the northeast corner, northwest corner of US 98 and Old Lakeland Highway, right where they come together, you have IL, future land use, industrial light, surrounded by ROR, retail office residential, which has a max density of 24 dwelling units per gross acre along that, that node right there. Surrounding that is Res 3, and then to the north, again, you have more industrial light future land use.
I think, I think in applications like this, it's good to see the overall picture of the area that we're talking about.
Trucking, trucking.
So.
I can tell you it's rural. Most of it was growland and pasture land.
But it, it, it's rural when you look at it. So is our ranch, so is my blueberry farm, but it's Res 9.
Y'all, y'all decided to change it?
It's, no, we don't have to change it, it's Res.
Hmm?
It's Res 9, but it's a blueberry farm. It's, it's multi-family, but it's a blueberry farm. So it's because it looks like.
That zoning was changed, it was Ag before that.
So these are the future land use categories.
There's two different levels here.
So here you have the Res 3, which kind of wraps it on to the south, barely seen there. The Res 6, district, if you will, where the subject property is in, ROR, IL here, IL to the north, and all this is the agricultural rural.
On the other side?
Yes.
But on this side, it's six dwelling units per acre. And you're proposing two dwelling units? 1. what?
1.3.
I don't know what basis you're denying it on.
I think it's due to that, so there you, it's in.
But it's Res 6.
There's no services at all.
But, but they're allowed to do well and septic on a half acre or larger. I, I, I'm not a land use attorney. Looking at my attorney, what, I mean.
If, if the board believes that this is not the appropriate timing, or it's not compatible with its surrounding uses, the board may deny the rezon and leave it at AC or whatever it is now. Just, if we're talking about it, you have a line of businesses, trucking operations on the west side of Old Lakeland Highway, right at a major intersection with 98 improvements going east towards Lakeland. I think it's better suited for a job creating site personally than residential right there. But if we do go residential, higher density isn't going to cut it.
Half acre?
But it's, it's prime location for potential, for commerce. Want to, the chair has any thoughts on, on that opportunity?
Not if he wants it to stay Ag.
It just, to me, it just doesn't seem the timing's right for this, so. There's a lot of, a lot of land that hadn't been made in higher density coming out of Date City before you get your way out here.
Is that Date City where it's dark blue? It says annexation right there?
Yes. That might be some of their new annexation.
And how far is that? How far is that?
What, oh, one mile. 0.8, six miles. One mile.
I just don't feel it fits for, for the timing, what we're talking about now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the applicant if they would be willing to go to the two and a half acres.
So the question is, if you would be able to go to two and a half acre sites?
I mean, I think from the applicant's perspective, you know, they've, they're already, the site can allow under Res 6, 176 units, so they're down to 1.3 units per acre. They're, they're actually at 40 units versus 176 units, which is what the land use permits. So I think they're to the point where they're, you know, there's not much more that they can carve out of this in terms of reducing density. I think they probably would rather, I can ask them, they're not here, I can check with them really quickly, but I think they may want to just go ahead and, you know, move forward with whatever the board's recommendation is and go from there.
Yeah, I think you're looking at denial. If it's, if it's denied, you're going to wait a year to come back.
Right, right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
What about one acre?
Yeah, maybe, you know, one acre versus half acre. I mean, two and a half acres is quite large for, you know, what's going on around this property. There is, you know, a lot of more dense development coming online, there's, you know, dense development in, in Date City, there's the, I think as the commissioner pointed out, some stuff to the south that's, you know, a little bit denser. It's, you know, they're on half acre lots on well and septic, so to go, you know, given we're on this side of the, you know, the rail line, and it is Res 6, you know, maybe one acre lots, they would be okay with that. But two and a half acres is just kind of out of character. But obviously, you know, we're going to go with whatever the board's recommendation is, because we do want to move forward, so.
Shelley, there's stuff on residential only?
Yeah, this has been residential, because it's Res 6. What we had, what I was mentioning back there is to do non-residential on this piece, you'd have to do a flume amendment. So whoever would have to come in, would have to go through a whole, you know, future land use amendment in order to do anything non-residential on it, which, you know, I don't know that that is feasible, so.
I still, I, I think through it, but I still can't support that. Two and a half acres possibly, but nothing, nothing more dense than that in this area.
I'll be happy to answer any questions, yeah. I mean, we would, you know, one acre would be better than two and a half acres, but, you know, they do want to move forward. So whatever the board's recommendation is, you know, that's what we're going to go with. That's, you know, we want you all to be comfortable and it's your choice, so. But we do think that it's significantly reduced at 40 units under Res 6, because we are literally at 1.3 units per acre.
So what would two and a half, would two and a half acres give you?
I don't know, I don't have a map on that. Probably cut it in half, almost, 20 some units. There isn't any, even at the 176 units, the traffic study that was done by Elizabeth Rodriguez, there's nothing, even at 176 units, which of course is not what's before you today, it was not triggering anything in terms of level of service on Old Lakeland Highway. So there was no issues there either.
About 12 units.
It'll give us 12 units at two and a half acres. So. We did agree, and Mr. Hall had, had a question about the wall, we did agree on an eight foot wall on that's, on that southern end adjacent to his property, he did request that, so we did agree with that as well, so. We're good with all the conditions of approval, if you just want to remove condition A, I think there's a lot of good stuff in there that's, you know, will be good for the county and is, you know, part of subdivision approval, so we're fine with all those conditions to remain.
I'll make a motion to approve with 13 units.
How many?
13. Tough to build a half a unit.
Why 13?
Tough to build a half a unit.
That's a odd number.
Can I answer Commissioner Starkey's question from earlier?
Yes, you may.
2.33 acres. So according to our historical maps, there were three mobile homes on that property, so our 1975 maps, and two homes on that property. So a total of five units on that property per our 1975 maps. So it would be like a legal non-conforming use.
Now there's six. Yeah, there's six on there. I'm looking at, adding on the Pasco map.
Yeah, okay.
It's been like that a long time.
Huh?
34 years.
One owner and.
There's at least one unit there that was from 1958, so.
Crazy.
I remember when they did it, but I don't remember, I wasn't here for the activity on it, so. All right, I have a motion, this, this time without a second, I didn't get a second on 13 units.
I'll make a motion for 15 units.
Why light, light industrial on this thing?
It's Res 6.
Doesn't matter, it's aligned with trucking operations, everything at a US highway intersection. Yeah. Next to rail.
No rail.
Massive improvement.
Rails on the other side.
Well, it is, but, but you also have going south, going southeast. I mean, it's a, it's a prime intersection for commerce and I mean, you had the expansion of 98 going southeast in the.
Does it matter if there isn't water and sewer for, for a dusty?
You can get a package plant.
Mr. Chairman?
No, we, we don't do package plants now.
Yes, sir. Maybe we talk to the applicant about, and continue this, and maybe talk to them about doing a board initiated flume amendment to go that way. Take the expense away from them, encourage them to go this way here. You could get the job creation if they're willing to do so.
Is that a motion? How do we do this? This is a first.
I'd want to bring the applicant up to make sure.
This is what our comp plan changes will fix, what goes weird.
So it would be a motion to continue to your next, to your next, to next meeting in, in Date City, but I, I assume the commissioner wants some buy-in, that there'll be discussion over that.
I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from the applicant on it. We're talking about if we continue this item back, if we did a board initiated comprehensive plan amendment to go to a light industrial. So you wouldn't have the expense of that. We would take care of it.
Yeah, I did, I wanted to talk to my client about it, and so if a continuance would be in order, so we can try to get everybody comfortable with this idea and speak about it, that would be fine. I'd be happy with that. They're, unfortunately, they're not, they're traveling.
What's the next meeting in Date City?
September 3rd.
Move to continue to September 3rd.
2nd.
And that would be at your 1:30?
At the 1:30 meeting.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
5-0, so we will continue it to September 3rd. Next item is P 64.
Yeah, I don't think we need a presentation, let's just have her announce it and then we'll vote on it, because this is just a pastime. Right? Yeah.
We'll do more now, because we've got some public hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you have approved publication of this matter in the Tampa Bay Times, July 28th of 2024.
Amy Farrell, Budget Director with the Office of Management and Budget for Pasco County, item P 64 or OMB 240041, is the Bay Care Health System Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act application and public hearing. If the chair would like to ask for any public comment?
Okay. Anyone signed up?
No one's signed up.
Okay. Is anyone in, is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Who's to approve?
We did have a reservation signed up, but there is no one online at this time.
Second a motion?
Okay, a motion in a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Bye, both.
Thank you.
That was the last item we have on here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just bring up two quick items? Well, when I was trying to get an update in the scallop season. Well, I want to get an update in the scallop season, I did get it. When they did the studies, the only location they identified was an issue with Rabbit Key, which is immediately south of the Inoculate River, once you enter the Gulf. So we should be close to getting some type of opening at the scallop season again. I'm going to reach out to our state legislators as well as Fish and Wildlife to try to make that happen. And just one of the, one point I'd like to bring out, I didn't think about it much, but the item we had on the tourist open council today, I'm going to recommend that we go back to, especially on these big items, that any, any item that's kind of come before the board, especially anything like that magnitude, should hit the tourist open council too. And it should hit before it gets to this board. I mean, we, we're pressured into a situation real quick, and we should have the time set to where they can hear it, they can vet it, and then we can get a recommendation, recommendation from them. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Yes.
I know the clerk has something, but just for purposes of the record, you consent one twenty-nine, which was an addendum, that was included in your consent agenda motion, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. I just want, I just want the board to realize that that's.
Not that I'm being told what to do, but.
My, my position has always been that if there's an addendum, and it's an addendum as a consent item, you approve it with your, your consent item. But I have, but I've had questions over the day about whether that has been approved.
So we cleared that up now?
Yes, thank you.
That's good.
For the record, that was AC one twenty-nine.
The clerk asked any. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, as we all know, the county administrator initiated a resolution for local state of emergency last week in response to the weather event. For the purposes of the record, we would just like the board to note Resolution Number twenty-four one fifty-seven, declaring the state of emergency in Pasco County that was executed by the county administrator as, and included, as noted, as part of this agenda.
Move through.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Anything else for the good, other than the fact that appreciate all our staff members, all of our employees? Things are going great in Pasco County, and we certainly appreciate everything that y'all do. So, you know, it's not easy at times, but a lot of things are not easy, but when you get to the end, we're going to be a better county, a better premier county for, for all of us. So, thank you. That we're adjourned.